Note that the benefits are 27 percent. One gentleman last night in talking about one of the articles picked up a number out of the article and spoke of it as being a salary for an individual. And it was money for people, but the individual would not have seen a salary that high. He would have seen the blue, or will see, I guess, the blue area. And the red, although it's a benefit to him, is not salary dollars, but very much on our mind as we work through the appropriations. This table is in your warrant, I believe it's on page, it's 13 in the warrant, I believe. And if my memory serves me right, it's 15 in this municipal budget supplement, which has been available, which has all the numbers in it, more than I can comprehend usually in one sitting. And here again, you see the 1.4 percent increase, broken down as it has been at this level, and it's broken down into several iterations in the warrant and the budget book. Now, if you go to the table on page 13, I think it's on page 13 or 15, I'm sorry, it starts on page 15, there's line items. And I've gone through, and I'll speak about a few that sort of stick out, that are more than 10 percent and involve substantial amounts of dollars. The collector is up, we've got $16,000, 40 percent increase in that macro line in the budget because of additional efforts we're making to collect overdue taxes. We've been working on overdue taxes for a number of years, but as you can imagine, as we're working down through that list, the longer you work on it, you get to the harder and harder cases, and we're having to spend more money to chase the money. The dog officer, the regulations have increased the level of these services, so there's a big percentage increase there, although it's not really big dollars. And elections, as you know from prior meetings, fluctuates back and forth depending on how many elections we're going to have, and particularly when there's a state election coming up, that has a big impact on Kathy Bellman's operation. Human resources, Charlie has proposed putting forward an employee recognition program, fairly modest dollars, but a big percentage increase. Municipal services, quite logically, you see 11 percent increase there as a result of expanded library space. Remember, I told you last night, the library's going to be three times bigger than the old one, so there's more custodial services, et cetera. And municipal properties is also going to undertake several large projects, one of which to be to repair and rebuild the town hall steeple, and another to repair and paint the DPW building. Somebody asked me, I think at the FinCom hearing, about painting town hall, you appropriated that last year, it's about to be done this spring, and I think we got a good bid on it. Natural resources, again, some increased services, looking toward the startup of NARA and the additional lawn mowing capability. The planning board, we're adding time, not another billet per se, although I suppose that you'd call it an increased FTE if you were talking the school budget, but about $12,000 in additional clerical hours. Those of you who followed municipal budgets closely will remember that in the '90s, when we were seeing site plans virtually every week, we had a certain level of staffing, and then things dropped off, and we cut back, and now things are ramping up again. Police increase is almost completely, and replacement of, other than the wage increment, is replacement of portable radios, which we've had one set that has served us very well over the years. Our police have a particularly ingenious method of assigning the radios to each individual officer, and they take ownership and take very good care of them. And we're going to go to an advanced set, which have a capability for an officer to summon assistance merely by pressing a button on the radio and alerts everybody on his watch, which we think is a big increase in not only the officer's safety, but the service they can give you. And lastly, a fairly large increase in MIS, computers, it's called supplies, but it's essentially software, and I'm going to talk a little further about that. You'll remember, perhaps, and perhaps you won't, that we came with a warrant article originally, again, an outside the budget warrant article five years ago, four years ago, to present a integrated, comprehensive computer plan, which I had the great pleasure and privilege of presenting. And lo and behold, here in my last time around as chairman, and a year from the end of my last term, I'm back up to urge you to appropriate the money for the fifth year of that plan, which includes a vehicle manager software, recreational database, which is coming in very timely. I don't think when we laid out this five-year plan, we exactly realized that it was going to, we were going to be getting software just in time to handle the NARA project, but that's the way it worked out. And geographic information system. Geographic information system, for those of you who don't know, is basically computer mapping. And the, there are a number of projects that this enhances in town. What it basically involves is getting everything about the town, where hopefully the sewer lines are, where your septic systems are, where your houses are, where the street boundaries are, all of the details that everybody works with in town government into a geographic overlay where it can be shown up, thrown up graphically. And we've seen some very interesting illustrations of that in the very small capability we have in that area currently, in the sewer work, where, among other things, you heard Nancy mention that there was a miscalculation on the length of pipe of our prior consultant. And that sort of thing is addressed by this software, and has always been projected for this year, and we're asking you to appropriate the money for that. There is about a $77,000 increment for that, which represents an increment over, it's actually about a $98,000 expenditure, it represents about a $77,000 increase over the increment of the software that we bought last year in the fourth year of the plan. We also have to upgrade some hardware in order to handle the GIS project. Just to give you an idea of the scale of the town's computer operation, when we came to you at the beginning of this program, we asked for appropriation for 47 computers, which we bought from Digital and installed in a wide-area network in town, and we have 10 other computers from other sources, for a total of 57 computers in the town operation. The only other organization in town I draw any comparisons with, some of which are not apt, but are is the schools, and their administrative wing is certainly of some interest. They have 60 computers for administration purposes and 878 for instructional purposes. It gives you some idea of how computerized the town is. This slide simply shows the software end of the implementation and shows the end of the program here. We expect to be online with the last of these software increments in 2000. Of course, there will be maintenance expenses, and we're probably replacing some of this stuff in time, but this is the end of the five-year program to get the planned municipal wide-area network fully operational. Now, where are we going generally with budgets? We talked a little bit of the overview, the finance committee started the beginning of the meeting, there was some discussion during the recreation article last night about finances generally, and you saw this slide before. We do have a structural problem. Again, this line was the line for inflation, the green line, I'm sorry, it was two and a half, I wish it wasn't, they were reversed. This is Proposition 2 and 1/2. This is the line for inflation, the red line is the town, these are the vertical dimensions in percentages, this is the town budget, cumulative percentages over the years. Our activities are essentially independent, at least in a gross level, from the population in town. And in looking back over all the budgetary numbers, back to 1981, which I use as a base mark, because that's Proposition 2 and 1/2 here, it's difficult to make any fair comparisons before that. The population in the town has changed, total population in town has changed by less than 200 people. The last year, we had 115 more people in town than we had in 1981. The dramatic thing which is impacting our friends over in the school system is that the percentage of those people that are school age has changed fairly substantially. The school operation, of course, is very directly related to the number of children in the school, and thus, when we did this graph, the comparisons, we normalized it for enrollments, if enrollment went up 1 percent, we consider, and for instance, in the school budget went up 0 percent, we would consider that a 1 percent decrease, or 1 in 1 would be a 0 percent. In any event, I bring back to you again the same message of the finance committee, is we're in good shape now financially, we know where we are, we're working to make sure that we have revenues to cover our expenditures, but the trend lines are separating, ladies and gentlemen, and these are responsible budgets, and I urge you to improve them, but remember that we do have a structural problem, that we eventually have to overcome one way or the other. I trust you will vote for 1.4 percent increase in this base budget, which I'd submit to you, at least in my humble opinion, is a responsible budget and well implements the initiatives undertaken in prior years and the ongoing business of town. And as we have, as the Board of Selectmen has in past years, we promise to you that we will return any substantial funds that are unspent, for which there's no emergency urgent need at the end of the year, as we have in each of the successive years since we've had a bottom-line budget. Thank you very much.
Comments now from the finance committee, please.
The finance committee recommends your approval of this article, and we just wanted to iterate a couple of processes, reasons why. First, the budget process as described by Dorey, and as described as we go, as you listen to the people describe the articles as we go through them on the municipal side, lead one to have confidence that what is recommended has gone through a process of bottom-up and top-down. And we're here tonight to vote on that type of a process, the results of that process. What we have on page 20 of your warrant articles is a list of the municipal articles that have to do with finances. And we're now at Article 22, shown at the bottom, for the $12.9 million. We've gone down through this list to Article 21, and on this particular chart, I broke it out. So the total amounts, if all articles of a financial nature are approved, will be 14.7. That's the number we showed last week, and that's the number that appears in the warrant. So then, in looking at that, we close out with one reminder, that the uses of the funds for the town are represented for the municipal part on this pie chart by the green for the municipal budget, the warrant articles, and Neswick. And basically, they aggregate to 36 percent of this total pie. This total pie is $40.8 million. So as we go through the budget, each of these items that are in the municipal piece constitutes 36 percent of the total budget. Thank you.
And now the budget is open to the town meeting members for comment, support, question, whatever. Ms. Williams.
Nikki Williams, Horseshoe Drive. I have a question for you, Dorey. Have you done, or can you explain what you're doing for the year 2000 problem that will probably affect all the town's computers?
The easy answer to that, Nikki, is we have a consultant. Petimation, our computer consultant, has had the gun held to their head and has undertaken, promises that they've undertaken all the necessary curative steps. Now, if you want me to explain in software language what that is, I couldn't begin to. I set my computer and my network in my office the other day to 2000 and played around with it, and my system didn't crash. And I have taken out an insurance policy in this regard by promising not to run again in 1999.
No applause at this moment would be appropriate, believe me. Other comments from the town citizens? If you have a question, would you go to the microphone now?
Susan E., Frame 132 Arlington Street. I just have a question as to how on the budget our vote to provide earlier additional funds for the library custodian interfaces with the funds that you were just talking about for the library custodial staff.
Mr. Hunter.
There's about $19,000, as I recall, of the numbers, I hate getting numbers off the top of my head, was voted the other night as an increment in maintenance services for the library. Again, don't hold me the number if I'm wrong, but in any event, that had to do with people. There are also increased costs for materials in maintaining the building, soap, mops, buckets, you know, that sort of thing. And that's what's in part in Dean's budget here, looking toward the maintenance of the
Other comment? Yes, Mr. Gratz.
Yeah, Martin Gratz, Stone Street. Just one question, computer-related, nothing to do with Y2K, which I think is way overrated. But with all the work you're going to do, do you have any plans to put Town Hall accessible to the citizens by electronic mail? If not, why not?
The plan is to have citizens access to the network in the library, which was always, has been the plan, and indeed, I believe we buried cable in anticipation of that, but as you know, the library at the moment's down in the old hardware store, and for the period of time it was down there, it didn't seem appropriate to get into that. But when the library is back in the beautiful new structure being built, we expect there to be public access terminals in there.
No, that's not the question I asked. The question I asked is can we, as citizens, reach people in Town Hall through electronic mail?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not understand the question. You can reach Don Johnson at tmacton@ma.ultranet.com.
That's the first time I've heard about that.
Well, he's only been up for about two weeks, so I prodded along at the point of a knife. The town manager's email address is, all small letters, all run together, tmacton@ma.ultranet.com.
Oh, I know him. Thank you.
And if anybody wants to reach me, they can get me at dorey-hunter@compuserve.com, and I'll relay it.
My number's still 263.
Other comments?
May I also add that for the last couple of months, the town manager has managed to get the Board of Selectmen's agenda up on the town webpage prior to the selectmen's meeting. And I hope, and we've had one discussion in that regard, in the very near future, some minutes will be appearing too, so those of you that don't want to watch TV or come can follow a little closer on what goes on in town.
What is the address of the webpage?
I don't know, it's about the fifth bookmark on my computer. It's on Alpharetta, I can tell you that, but I've...
We'll get it for you in one minute, just one moment.
The Acton homepage address is ma.ultranet.com/tildeacton.
Okay, enough of this. Sharing of numbers and addresses. We're now going to vote on the motion as read. All in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move, I should have also made one other comment on people who do a lot of work that don't get recognized. They are the checkers who check us in here, and the tellers who count your ballots. And I would particularly like to thank Belle Choate, who arranges for the tellers, helps them to do their job, and really does a terrific job of it, and I'm very grateful for Belle's help in presiding and running town meeting, and a very important part of town meeting. I would now move to Article 23, dealing with capital improvements, sidewalks. Mr. Fredericks moves that the town raise and appropriate $160,000 to be expended by the town manager, for the purpose of designing and constructing sidewalks, and that to raise such amount, $160,000 be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Mr. Fredericks.
The reason this article is on, in recent years, we've been trying to expand our sidewalk program. So each year, we try to get a little bit more of what we call collector roads, which are the main roads with sidewalks towards the center. This year, it happens to be part of Central Street and part of Concord Road. Actually, this is a two-part map, it doesn't all fit on here, and you probably can't see the red line. Right now, what the proposed article is to install sidewalks from Windsor Ave. down the, what I would call the southeast side of Central Street, and I've got to do this in a two-part map. And at this point in time, down to Martin. Now, this is a proposal in the article. This means that we think this is the best side of the street for it. I've got a couple of slides to show for this. Let me throw you Concord Road first, and then we'll get into the slides. Concord Road is a short section going from Minot to Nagog Hill Road, it comes out right here. I want to show a couple of slides. Basically, we're looking at it southeast on Central Street, this, the right side is looking southeast, and it looks like the sidewalk will best fit going straight down this side of the road. Got a couple more slides showing essentially the same thing. I think we're all pretty well familiar with Central Street, so I think you can kind of whip through the rest of these, Gary. Nope, too soon, too soon, too soon, too soon. Selectmen recommend this article.
The finance committee recommends acceptance of this article.
Comments from the town meeting members? Mr. Cady?
I just, yeah, 2A. Could you give us some clarification about what's going on with 2A? I saw one brief article, I've been here every year for the last three years, asking for sidewalks on 2A, and you finally convinced the state to do it for me. I really appreciate you doing that. I think it was you, Nancy, right? Could you explain what the process is on that, and what the, on 2A, what the state's going to be doing?
Actually, I'm not even too sure what they have going on 2A, David, you know?
Mass Highway, sidewalk here.
What?
Mass Highway, sidewalk, sidewalk.
Yeah, but they don't have a program. This is just... As part of, Bill, as part of the resurfacing project, Mass Highway has decided to put in some sidewalks. As far as we as a town go, we don't have plans to expand upon that right now. Certainly, we can consider it for next year, but basically, what we're looking at first are the collector sidewalks to the various centers.
Michael Bealas, Willow Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you yet, sir, but are you finished, Mr. Fredericks?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll recognize you, sir.
Michael Bealas, Willow Street. I just had a question, if you're doing all of Central Street, why you're not connecting up from Windsor up to the sidewalks that are, what, about Willow or Summer? I think they go...
Yeah, actually, I got a few calls from some residents, and that stretch is extremely difficult because we have two major sloping areas. If you look at the property just north of the cemetery, it's a private property, and the road ends and it slopes down. Across the street, coming around the turn, is the swamp. Both of those are very, very difficult to get to. Also, we are doing a review with the Transportation Advisory Committee, or at least is scheduled for this year, to look at a crosswalk and/or a reconfiguration of the Windsor Ave. and Central Ave. intersection. So it doesn't make sense for us to address beyond that at this point in time.
Other comments? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote, all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 24, dealing with capital improvements, facilities and equipment. Mr. Fredericks moved that town raise and appropriate $113,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of purchasing equipment and making infrastructure repairs as listed in the article, and that to raise such amount, $113,000 be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Mr. Fredericks.
First part, this is four parts of this article, as you can see from the warrant. The first capital expenditure is a new telephone system for Town Hall. Now, basically, what we, I've got a couple of slides to show you, Gary showed you one a little bit prematurely, but the only, you know, it doesn't make any sense taking a picture of a telephone, I mean, what do you do, right? So we dug up the telephone system that we had installed and operating in 1912, and I thought you would appreciate this.
What do you all find so funny about this?
Those were the first two Belle telephone employees, actually before Don McHansett. In the early '80s, we spent a lot of time and effort and some money updating the system, and what we updated it is this. Seriously, you know, it didn't make any sense taking a picture of a telephone. The existing phone system's been in since 1984. It is at capacity, we can't even add another handset to it. We don't intend to waste the existing phone system. It's compatible and usable in the police station and the fire station, so we'll be able to use the equipment. But you get a typical handset now, and if it fails, it costs $300 to repair it, and you know you buy a new one for 100 and 1/2 if you could find a new one. So you really need to upgrade the system to take advantage of it. The upgraded system that's proposed will also pick up the new library. The cable is being run to Town Hall, so all the central switching will be done from Town Hall. The existing system is a 32-line input and a 64 handset extensions to go with the system. The new system, the way the technology works, is you've got 272 ports, is that right? I picked the right number. And the ports are either inputs or outputs, so you can do anything you want to it. We look at it, it's got, you know, all the features of today, all the buzzwords, it's got voicemail and conferencing messages, it's got everything that we would need, and certainly, it's, will last us, I would say, probably well past a millennium. Why don't we take this one at a time? Does anybody have any questions on the phone system?
Mr. Cadillac.
Yes, I hope you don't put a tape on it, because if I call Town Hall, I don't want to go through 20 questions.
For that, select item 3, Charlie. No other questions, I'll move on.
Is there a question on the telephone system? We'll deal with it one at a time.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Dave Clough, 14 Evergreen, you mentioned that it also would include the library. Why wasn't the library budgeting included a phone system?
Well, because it's cheaper to partake in the new phone system from the town, it's just a matter of running the cable, it's so close. We wouldn't do the same thing to pick up the police station or fire stations, but where the library's so close and everything's dug up, it was just, made more sense to run the cable and pick it up, because the new phone system for the Town Hall is probably twice what we actually need right now, and we'll probably need in the next five years.
I guess the question is, with the budget, with the money we voted in for the library, it didn't include a phone?
I would guess not.
The library budget included the wiring, the hookups and the handsets, but not the central switching. The central switching's included in this budget.
Okay, no other questions on this one? Move on then, if you like, Mr. Fredericks.
Town Hall clock repair. Now, I think probably the best thing is to show you a couple of pictures. This clock has been, ooh, has been inoperable for some time. We've had it repaired numerous times over the last 20 or 30 years. It actually is a mechanical clock. If you can show the next couple of pictures, we'll describe what it is. This is an inside shot, and what it is, is a bunch of rods and gears running off a mechanical mechanism, which I'll show you later, it gets hand-cranked. Wait a minute, go back.
Go back.
If you're looking at this from the inside, you'll see that all it is is hardware cloth and a mesh, yet from the outside, it looks like it's a solid black opaque. In fact, a few of us had to do a double take and had to go take a real close look at the Town Hall. If you look up at the clock from the street, if you don't look real closely, you'll see that it looks black, and you think it's opaque. So the first time I saw this shot, I said, gee, is that the same thing I've been looking at? And it is. You get on the inside, and this is what it looks like from the inside. Next. More of the gears and rods, keep going, Gary. Keep going, Gary. This is actually the mechanism. And what it is, is you hand-crank the thing, and then you... thing, and then you let the weight pull it down. Keep going. Uh, more of the, more of the pulleys. And that's the weight. You, you see, every morning, every morning, you get somebody, hopefully a town volunteer, and you crank this thing up. Um, so you can see that it really doesn't make a lot of sense to, uh, to do a lot of repairs on this. Um, the new equipment is all electronic, all automatic. We can set the timing of the, of the dongs, and we can set the clocks, and each face actually has its own drive mechanism. Uh, what we, on the Board of Selectmen, we decided we'd like to have this stuff operating by the turn of the century, so that we actually can have it, have it working, and, and the next article is the bell repair. Any questions on the clock before we go on to the bell repair? Kind of both closely related. Are you going to talk about the clock or the bell? Okay. Uh, Mike Saunders, Freedom Farm Road. What is going to happen to the old clock? The mechanism is going to be kept intact, and right now, we're hoping to store it, or as much of it, of what we can, in the Town Hall lobby, right where the flower is. In other words, make, possibly make another display case. We intend to keep it. And now the bell? Now the bell. Now, this shot, you get to see the bell. Um, and that, and that's the lattice that you were looking at before, that they said looked opaque from the outside. Do you want to flip it again, Gary? And that's just the pivot that the bell is sitting on. Next one. Now, this is a striker, the vertical thing here, that looks like it's just standing there, and actually, right now, it's a mechanical striker, and it comes over and it does the gong. Uh, we love the story that, uh, Dorey had his head up inside the bell when he decided to take the first striker, which is inside the bell, and just to see if it worked, and he gonged it. And I'm not sure he ever recovered. It took all his hair out. The, uh, the new striker will be all electronic-controlled, and it'll simply be a solenoid-actuated rod, and it'll hit the old bell, so it'll actually keep the bell mechani, the, the bell stays, uh, the pivot thing that hasn't pivoted since the time Dorey used it last, uh, that all stays. So just the mechanical part of, of, uh, of the clock will go downstairs. Any questions on the, on the bell? I think we may have one. I recognize a gentleman at the back.
Tom Cadaya, South Acton. On this, you want to restrict the bongs, as you call it, during the night? What other hours?
Yeah, we decided to restrict it to every hour on the hour, every fifteen minutes three times.
Right.
Every hour and a half hour.
Right.
No, seriously, uh, yeah, we can, we can program it any way anybody wants it programmed. I think, I think, uh, we really haven't discussed when we're going to do this, but I, I would assume that we probably will not have it striking during the night hours, probably up through the evening.
What time are we going to shut that off at night?
Uh, I think whenever the citizens would like us to.
Why, why shut it off? Why don't you have it go right through, like, down the digital? They have that going all day and all night, and you say it's going to bother some people in that neighborhood? Is that the answer?
Yeah, we have, we have complete flexibility. That's why I can be very evasive on this one. We have complete flexibility, any way people want it to be done. Um, I don't think we've had any plans to, uh, presently, that, uh, when we're going to ring it or not ring it. It's, it's fully programmable, so we can, we can change it as it see fits. I would think that, uh, there would probably be a few complaints if we were ringing it every hour on the hour, especially like eleven and twelve at night. I mean, then you get eleven rings. You know, we can program it so you get one ring. Um, but I don't, at this point in time, that hasn't been determined.
Now, one o'clock. One ring, one o'clock. Where do they go from there?
Well, that, that's easy. It's the twelve o'clock one.
Oh, boy. Daylight of standards.
If you, if you'd like to mo, make a motion to, uh, ring it every hour, that's fine.
Well, for that, I'd love to hear a clock.
Do we hear a motion? Not in order. Okay, no more questions on that. The last item in this article is, uh, the Elm Street tennis courts. This is, this is Elm Street in West Acton. Um, these, uh, these courts are actually somewhat in disrepair. They've been there thirty years, and we've done some patching and some fixing. Um, we had a lot of discussion about possibly moving the courts, but, uh, people in West Acton would like to keep them in West Acton. Um, the reason we're talking about moving it is that there's frost heave problems, there's groundwater problems, there's all kinds of problems. Moving the courts will leave us with a, with a big hole that will cost us almost half of this money, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars, just to clean it up and pave it over, and then we've got a parking lot. Uh, so the, the selectmen have, uh, after much discussion, uh, recommended that we spend this amount of money, uh, basically to give us, uh, better courts than there are, and for, for those of you in West Acton that use the courts, even as bad as they are, you know, people use them all the time. So we look at, uh, we'll get probably twenty-year service out of it by spending this amount of money, and we'll have a nice set of tennis courts. And we're, we're at this point in time somewhat uncertain, uh, the disposition of the tennis courts in front of the school, simply because we're not sure of what's going to happen with the school project and/or the sewer project. Questions on a tennis court? I see none. Okay. Selectmen recommend this article. Finance Committee?
Finance, Finance Committee recommends acceptance of all the articles.
Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no?
No.
Motion carries. We'll move to Article twenty-five, Capital Improvement Vehicles. Mr. Kabakov moves that the town raise an appropriate $122,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of replacing vehicles as listed in the article, and that the town manager be authorized to sell, trade or dispose of vehicles being replaced, and to expend any proceeds received. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Kabakov, to your motion. Uh, this is a rather a routine, and I'll try to really be brief in view of the hour and what other, what we have before us in the future. We have about a hundred and twenty-three vehicles, not counting the police vehicles in our fleet, uh, that's, uh, total fleet, rather, including the police vehicles, about a hundred and nine that are not. Uh, the bottom line is that, uh, the reason that this is on the warrant at all is it is that it is the Board of Selectmen's policy to put major capital expenditures on separate articles. You see an article with regard to replacements of vehicles every year for approximately the same amount of money. Uh, this year, we have three. One is a twenty-three-year-old ten-ton dump truck that's really ready for retirement. One is a thirteen-year-old car that's not going to pass state inspection, and the other is a one-ton dump truck that's twelve years old, uh, that's going to be kept for light work, resident probably in NARA, uh, when NARA comes online. Uh, it'll probably stay in the fleet, but for very limited use. Uh, this is simply the, the, the replacement of, of our assets, so that we can continue to serve the town, um, in the, in the manner that it's become a custom. Uh, these three vehicles just will not, uh, go anymore, and they're scheduled, this is a routine scheduling for replacement. I have actually got pictures, I'm not to be outdone by other selectmen, but I, I can show you the sick vehicles if you wish to see them, uh, but again, in the interest of , uh, brevity, unless anybody wants to see the vehicles, uh, I'll, uh, defer, and, uh, simply say that the Board of Selectmen, uh, definitely, uh, recommends that we, uh, continue with our routine replacement of old vehicles and recommends this article. The Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this article.
And the citizens? I see no one standing. So we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-six, Dealing With Capital Improvements, Forest Road Landfill Closure. Mr. Mullin moves that the town raise an appropriate $126,000 to be expended by the town manager for professional services for design and preparation of specifications and bid documents to permanently close the Forest Road landfill. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I get the trash and the landfill. Never be a lame duck around here. The theme of this is striking while the iron is hot, but it is also consistent with the theme that I talked about before, of husbanding our resources, because we try to take advantage of some several significant opportunities that have come before us, uh, to use our own resources and other resources in the Commonwealth. Why are we doing this at all? The current interim cap, that it does not meet DEP regulations, which are listed there. We see an opportunity right now to get final approval under the current regulations, which were fluid when we did it the last time, they changed while we were doing it. And we have a duty to protect the environment. Now, what's, why are we saying strike while the, uh, the iron is hot? What is the opportunity? The big dig is the opportunity. We, this, this project has been on our capital requirements list for five or seven years, at least all the time that I've been here. Uh, but now, there is free clay that is available to towns that, uh, seek it. We have, we have, uh, applied for it, we've received the approval for it. So at a market price of approximately forty-two thou, uh, at twelve dollars, uh, the value is about $500,000 of free material. Specifically, what we're asking for is $126,000 to do the, the design. These, this is a fairly rigid process that exists under DEP regulations, and these categories that you see here are specific under DEP regulations. $126,000 is what we're talking about here. We did a, a number of iterations to try to find out whether the $126,000, which is one, one tenth, ten percent of the $1,260,000, $1,260,000 expected closing cost, and we've come up with a range from $80,000 to $214,000. Without going into the details of each of these, there are, are some of the re, these reasons in here, which, uh, costs were included, that we feel that the $126,000 is within When we look at this now, uh, basically, when we did our nineteen ninety-one projections, which is the $1,260,000, that's what we're talking about all along, that was based on nineteen ninety-one DEP formulas, take out, net out the $500,000 of, of clay and loam, net value six sixty. Uh, we, we used our own guesstimate, David Apt and John Murray and I sat down, and we went through line item by line item on, on doing quantity takeoffs. We think this may be the range we're talking about. If you use the current nineteen ninety-seven DEP regulations, this is, these are the numbers we're talking about. But the $126,000 budgeted item is to determine the final cost. In sum, this is a beneficial use and reuse of our natural materials. We use the central artery tunnel clay, we use a great deal of material of loam that is left over from, uh, the Ice House Pond, that is, uh, extra from NARA. We also use some tailings, uh, from the granite blasting up at NARA to, to produce the road that is being used to truck in the material. That's the other sources. We eliminate a potential liability that has been sitting out there for a while for us. We are preserving and protecting, uh, the environment, and opportunistically, we're striking while the iron is hot to get this $500,000 of free clay. The selectmen recommend this article.
From the Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends acceptance also.
Mr. Black?
If we get unlucky and the costs for actually, uh, closing landfill coming closer to the DEP numbers than ours, is this project bondable?
Yes, it is, uh, and we plan to bond it, uh, but it'll be the action of another town meeting.
Great.
It is bondable at a twenty-year cycle.
Uh, Ms. Cadillac?
Is the, uh, delivery of the clay included in the price, or do we have to pay for that
I believe it is, uh, free.
The clay itself is free, but delivered?
And, and the delivery is free.
Okay. This is near and dear to my heart, because we're paying the truckers a hundred dollars an hour now, so can we, anyway, verify that before we agree to take this free clay?
Mr. Johnson?
It is free. We'll do, we'll have a little bit of expense in handling on site, but it's coming out to us, uh, free, including the trucking.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Cadillac, you're going to schedule all this as part of your job, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Aronson?
Steve Aronson, two thirty-six Newtown Road. Um, Bill, I guess, I, my first question for you is, is the obtaining of the clay tied at all to the need for the study? I'll do it the other way. I'll do it the other way. Do we have to have the study in order to obtain the clay?
Once we go, went for the clay, that, uh, started a process of notification that now DEP is, is looking at our, uh, landfill more closely. We would have gotten there anyway, and you start to do any sort of net present value analysis, and you have to put on, you know, without going into the details, when we did this, we did certainty equivalents and probabilities of these events occurring, and everything came down, you take the clay in any case. Once you take the clay, you're going to get, people are going to notice it, and DEP is going to pick up on it, and thus, they're going to, uh, come and look at us. We would have had to do it anyway, and that's why we're doing it now, is striking while the iron's hot, taking advantage of the $500,000 value.
Um, let me ask the same question, perhaps differently. Could we take the clay and do no study?
Yes.
And what is the economic rationale for expending the $126,000 this year and not deferring it until sometime when we have to strike, because we're getting the heat, as opposed to the iron being hot?
Uh, right. They, basically, there's, I answered part of it, which is DEP has now come and told us that we are on, in their radar sights, and they want us to close the landfill. So that has occurred in any case. Uh, but the, the, so let me, what was the first, the other part of the question?
Why can't we wait till next year or the year after, or until DEP says, "You must now begin to plant"?
You could not, you could not plan now.
And still obtain the?
Still obtain the clay. It is our, our, we'll have to do this eventually. There is a shelf life to the clay, that you would run a risk, uh, that the clay might become, um, unusable. There is a risk that DEP regulations will change. So one of the reasons we've chosen to go ahead now is because we're, of the devil we know, which is the current regulations that exist now. Um, there is a risk that there could be more damage to the environment from the, the, uh, the landfill itself, and so with those reasons, we felt that it was compelling not to incur that risk.
Uh, I guess I might...
Let me ask, Mr. Hunter is waiting here to make some great comment and clear this up, is that correct?
Uh, I, I'd like to make the point that this is a lot of material, and, uh, if we don't do the study, we're just going to have to pile it, and the study will tell us how to configure it as it arrives, so that we'll be where and how we want it, uh, for the end. Otherwise, we're just going to have to pile it, put a cover on it, and keep it wet, and then rework the material later.
Oh, that's different. That suggests to me that we could not just take the clay and spread it over the landfill on a temporary basis?
You could, but there is drainage and vents and so forth that are required, that you're probably going to have to dig some of it up and put it in. We just don't know until we have a design as to exactly how it's going to be put in. It seems more efficient, along with the other reasons that Bill mentioned so ably, it seems most efficient to get it in the right place and the right configuration with piping or vents or whatever it's needed the first time.
I guess then, my comment would be that in a follow-up to Mr. Evans' concerns from yesterday about trying to figure out ways to conserve our expenditures until we absolutely have to make them, I see this as an opportunity to defer the expenditure of $126,000 until our great friends at the DEP, who are now under Nancy's thumb, um, come to us and tell us we have to act. So I would recommend against this article.
Mr. Hunter, and then the gentleman at the back.
Uh, the, uh, DEP individual who quote is under Nancy's thumb, unquote, has told us we can expect a consent order this summer. expect a consent order this summer.
The gentleman at the back.
14 Evergreen. The question is, what use can we, is there any use that we can use this land for once it's capped?
There are landfills that are being used. I have that anecdotally, like in Cambridge.
In Marlboro, there's a driving range on one.
The, our interpretation of what we see is that the use is extraordinarily limited because you must not do anything that would risk piercing the cap. But certainly, like you wouldn't ever put trees up there because the roots would have the tendency of piercing the cap. But certainly, when we get there, that'll be another opportunity for a use of our resources.
The lady at the front microphone?
Liz Perry, Asa Back Crossing. My first question is, what is the exact environmental damage that is being done by the landfill?
There is potential damage that is, that the landfill, the seal underneath may be releasing material that would plume out. We have had significant, extensive tests that say that we are not at any risk of coming on any lists. For example, we've been through Circola, and it's not a super fun site, and all of those things. Nonetheless, if you have a landfill cap that is not working, you're risking pluming out some of these materials that should be sealed.
And my other question is, do we know anything about the clay that's being sent to us? Has that been tested, or what potential environmental damage? I mean, Boston Harbor to me doesn't seem like the first place I go to for clay, or for anything.
The clay is, this is a program that has been set up, and it's been acknowledged by the DEP. There is a risk that, and we have encouraged people to do this. You have to test the clay to make sure it's the right type of clay. There's these tests. You want to comment on that, David? It is tested as it's delivered.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Hunter?
I happen to have a ringside seat to the Big Dig, and this is not coming out of Boston Harbor, it's coming up out of deep shafts, way down under Boston, and it's gooey gooey stuff, but it's not the sludge on the bottom of the harbor.
Not the stuff I'd give my grandson to play with either, is it?
If anybody really liked to see, Don has a bucket in his office.
Ah-huh. Now, give us his number again. Bucket.com, I think that's good. All right, well, seeing, yes, Ms. Fanton.
In Fanton, Fort Pond Road. I'm involved daily with the environmental mitigation for the Central Artery project, and one of the issues which we've tracked over the years is this reuse of the clay. And I can reassure you, I mean, I didn't realize I'd be speaking on this subject of my own town. I want to congratulate the Selectmen for, one thing, for being alert, for going after it. It's considered highly desirable. There's not nearly enough of it to go around for the communities that are looking for this material for free to cap their landfills. And as I understood it, it was awarded to those areas which needed enough that it was cost-effective, or at least lower than to take it somewhere else. But it is highly regulated by DEP, as we've learned that our sewer system and other things are. And I can assure you that the testing of it, that the clay that they're distributing for this purpose is as clean as anything we're going to be able to get in order to cap our landfill.
Okay, I see no one standing, therefore we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no. Motion carries. We move to Article 27. I think we will probably try to get through Article 31. There are several, couple of consent articles between where we are and 31. Probably start with Article 32 tomorrow night, we should be able to do that fairly quickly. We'll now move on to Article 27, dealing with a storage building. Mr. Kabakov moves that the town raise an appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of designing and constructing a storage building and making necessary improvements to the parking lot at Woodlawn Cemetery. And to raise such amount, one hundred thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Mr. Kabakov to your motion.
Thank you. This one is a little bit more interesting, in the replacement of vehicles. Basically, what you're seeing here is another one of the residual costs associated with NARA. We voted previously in town meeting to establish a recreation committee, commission, and some ancillary cost attendant thereto. Among them, we have voted in that same article to do some maintenance and incur some maintenance costs associated with NARA. And we now have a new title, I guess, for Mr. Tidman, and he's going to be in charge of all of the recreation through him and the natural resources. So there's a little bit of reorganization here associated with how to best manage the people and the equipment. There's a little bit of need for extra capacity, and there's a little bit of need associated with solving an ongoing current problem we have. That problem being that we are currently storing some of the equipment we have associated with the maintenance of our natural resources outside, all year. So that, of course, as you would well know, that's not exactly good for equipment. Just as a quick background, and I promise to be brief, we had this very same article brought to us in 1985. It was passed for the same amount of money, a hundred thousand bucks, but we didn't do it because at that time, we couldn't build a building, and that's what we were planning to do in 85 for a hundred thousand dollars. Basically, as you might know, the, our needs have increased since then, and even increased to the extent that we now, I think, have three trailers, storage trailers, that we have had to procure. They're currently located where the DPW building is. And I have pictures of the storage trailers, again, which I'll spare you in case you, unless you want to see how we have to store. You can imagine, you put all your stuff at the back, and then from the back to the front, now you need the thing in the front, you got to unload the entire storage trailer to get to the stuff in the front. We do that every day. And that's not exactly really efficient. So we're going to take this opportunity to see if we can become more efficient. We're going to locate a new building, 2,400 square feet, Butler Building. I have, I don't know, six, eight pages of technical data they gave me, which I was told I could read if I wanted, but I'm going to pass on that also, as far as the dimensions and the weight and the height of the building. We do know we can, in fact, obtain the building for the hundred thousand dollars. And that hundred thousand dollars includes the site preparation work at the cemetery. Why? We could get it, we could get this problem solved cheaper with storage trailers, but we can't put storage trailers at the cemetery. That wouldn't be conducive to our quality of life, which means that we have to keep the storage trailers where they are, and that makes the management of this whole activity a bit more inefficient. So what happens if you do not pass this article, we do not buy this building? We're going to have to ask you to leave some money left in the article to get more storage trailers, to get the stuff out of the elements and under roof. And I actually am going to defer showing you where it is, and I can actually show you a picture of the building. That might be a little interesting. There you go. You can see it's got two bays and a side door. Another interesting little tidbit here. I almost didn't show you this. It doesn't tell you much, it just shows you we can get stuff in there, including John Durst. But what is interesting here is that it is our plan, if you look in the lower right, to put a woodworking shop in here, and that's where we're going to do the maintenance of some of the furniture and picnic tables and, again, things we have to maintain as part of NARA. And benches. And it'll give us some room to do that. Basically, it's just, again, an ongoing necessity for running the town, and it's been exacerbated by virtue of the fact that we're going to have this showcase place in which to recreate, and we need to maintain it. So having said all these things, I'm, with, I'm here to say that the Board of Selectmen recommend this article.
Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 27.
Citizens of the town, Mr. Cadillac?
Would you happen to have something that shows us where in the cemetery this will be located? Because these are really ugly buildings. I hope it's not in sight of anything.
None of the abutters.
None of the abutters. Well, quality of life, you know.
Basically, where will be located, where we stored it?
Well, thanks a lot, Herman. I know where the, I know where the Woodlawn Cemetery is, I mean, if that's what you're...
Next to the existing building in Woodlawn Cemetery in a wooden, wooded area.
Behind the trees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the gentleman at the back.
Ronald Vareska, Mallard Road. I recall passing this article in 1985. At that time, this to get the equipment out of the chapel where it was being stored at that time. But you mentioned that we could not build that building in 1985 for a hundred thousand dollars. What's difference with the building that we're building now?
We're getting a pre, we're going to pre, we're going to assemble a Butler Building. And, you know, different technology, different kind of buildings. Back then, it was actually the construction of a building. I understand, couldn't do it then.
Ms. Cho.
Another thing too, I didn't mention, the only utilities we're bringing to this building are electricity, no plumbing, and last, last time we debated this in 1985, there was going to be bathrooms in there and some bit of a more, be more complexity.
I'm now recognized, Ms. Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Cadillac beat me to the mic, as a future abutter to this building. And I mean that. But speaking seriously, on behalf of the families and all the others that are there in that part of the cemetery that have lots there, have you got any ideas of how you're going to landscape and fit it in for those of us that look straight at that backside?
It was basically, the site was basically selected by virtue of the fact that it would fit in, the building would fit in and be relatively inconspicuous.
Okay, I'll be back to haunt you.
Bill, I promise you, no signs. There'll be no signs in that.
Gentlemen at the back. Yes, sir.
Hello, this is Greg Savage, 26 Stony Mead. I have a question, how the cost of this compares to adding another section to the school system? I think this is a matter of priorities in this town, and I'd like to just know how that compares.
Well, the cost of this is one hundred thousand dollars to add a new section to the school system? I don't understand exactly the question, but we've basically deferred on an article that was going to cost 12 million.
Can we fit a kindergarten into this building?
It's 2,400 square feet with no utilities. I don't think so.
I just think over time...
It's for storage.
Spending things like this, like fixing tennis courts, like things like that versus prioritizing the money in the town and spending it on the school system, I think that all these articles together, we should look at the school system first and decide what we're going to spend on.
I agree, it's a real conundrum. Here's, here's the problem. You have some current and already passed articles that will result in us having some resources. We have current buildings that need to be maintained, we have current lands that need to be maintained, we're about ready to triple the size of our library, which is going to have to be maintained, and we have kind of like cast the die. One of the things, if you'll recall, Tom Mackey said in his presentation, is that we've got to start concentrating on the maintenance of what we have and keeping it up to speed. And I couldn't agree with you more personally at all. It's a true, it's a true conundrum. We have a need for schools, and we definitely have a responsibility to maintain our current infrastructure. Where the line is, is for the town meeting to decide. I can tell you, if you decide not to do the storage building as proposed, I have to stand before you and say, leave some money in the article so that we can at least get the stuff out of the elements, and even more money than you'd need just to get the stuff we have out of the elements to allow us to get the new stuff out of, keep the new stuff out of the elements, or you're going to end up spending more money in the long run. What we need to spend to maintain what we have versus what we need to spend to expand is truly a matter of prioritizing resources. I couldn't agree with you more. Problem is, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars here. Quite frankly, it's my estimate based upon what I've had to spend for stories trailers, and we need about three of them, that you'd need at least another fifty, at least 50 of that, just for storage trailers for what we have now, plus what we will have. You won't have the storage, you won't have the efficiency of management, so you have to look at order of magnitudes as well. And you're right, you know, it's a real, it's a real, it's a real problem.
I understand taking care of property, I just, we're not going to be able to fix the kids.
The lady at the back.
Nancy Duggan, 186 Pope Road. I understand that this proposal is to protect the equipment from the elements, but as a parent of children at McCarthy Town, the elements are coming into that school building, and I think a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. Even if it's a small portion of a new school building, it would certainly pay for the fifteenth section of kindergarteners and put them somewhere, perhaps off-site, or just save that money for next year because eventually, some building is going to have to be provided for these children. And I just think if you're balancing, I would urge people to vote to protect the children and their future and their education as opposed to trucks, which maybe next year, we can build a shed for the trucks, which would survive the elements for one year.
Any other comment? See no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 27, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Article 28, dealing with the grand opening of the North Acton Recreation Area. Mr. Mullin moves that the town raise an appropriate 10,000 dollars to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of organizing and conducting a grand opening of the North Acton Recreation Area. Do I hear a second? Mr. Mullin.
This, this article is to separate it out. I think anytime you start to say that you're going to raise money for something like this, it should be segregated out so that people can think about it. This is not designed to be a big party, although it will be a celebration when we open our community park, which we've invested a lot of money in over the years and, and that we have spent really 10 to 15 years developing. But there's really three components to it. One is that it's celebrating the park. Second is that seed money for the, for private involvement in both the celebration itself and the opening. But most importantly, from my perspective anyway, it, I perceive it as marketing expense, that if we want the revenues, we need to, we need to sell the product. I put this up last time, which showed two sets of cash flows. One is what we had hoped to get based upon a projection of two years ago, and you can see that the donations that we had hoped for by now have not come in to the extent that we had, we wanted. So we're going to need to try to generate revenues to cover that difference. And then ultimately, this, this curve here is projected, it's showing larger usage of the swimming area most, most especially. So in order to get those revenues, we're going to have to try to use a marketing expense. So with that, I recommend the article.
From the Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this article.
All the comments. See no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no.
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 I want to hear that again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion's carried. 29, dealing with town board support for special projects. The motion under Article 29, Mr. Hunter moves that the town raise an appropriate $5,000 to be expended by the town manager for the ongoing expenses of the Acton-Boxborough Cultural Council, and to raise such amount, $5,000 be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Hunter.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Acton-Boxborough Cultural Council is a group that's supported partially on state monies, which provides art and culture. The organization last year ran a very successful second outdoor art show in the Arboretum, as you may recall, and in that regard approached the Board of Selectmen for $5,000 of funds for use in Acton, not in Boxborough, and we were able to provide that money. This year, the chairman of the group contacted me and asked how they would go about filing a citizens' article for this town meeting to seek a similar appropriation this year, and I advised her that since they were part of the official family, it was not necessary for them to petition that we would put that on as a selectmen's article, and we have. It's not a great deal of money, there are people who obviously are concerned about the schools and other expenditures in town, but there are some people that feel very passionately for the furtherance of the arts, and so we put the article on, and we do recommend it.
Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29.
Other comments? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 29, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Article 30 has been passed by consent, Article 31 has been passed by consent. We will, up to Article 32, I'll recognize, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this town meeting until 7:00 tomorrow night in this same hall, where I sincerely hope we will quickly finish the rest of the work.
All, that whole motion is acceptable, do I hear a second?
Hear.
All in favor of adjourning until 7:00 tomorrow night, when we hope to finish, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, we're adjourned.